Ladies and gentlemen, please know that I am humbled and honored to serve as the Vice Mayor of this community. I am very proud to represent the wonderful citizens of this amazing city and will continue to work tirelessly to advance the interests of our residents. I thank all of you who have placed your trust and confidence in me. I am not with you tonight because I think that that holding a normal in-person meeting of a City Council is premature. The decision to meet in person was made by the City Manager without consultation to me or other members of the City Council. Because the Sunshine Laws prohibit me from communicating with other council members, I could not make my views known to them. Some of them may have had reservations about meeting in person also, but because we cannot talk to each other outside of our meetings, they may have wrongly assumed I agree I agreed with this decision. I did not. Governor DeSantis has extended the emergency order allowing local governments to meet virtually and is likely to extend it again. I feel it is hypocritical for government bodies to congregate in public while at the same time discouraging others to do so. The City Council has the ability and legal authority to meet virtually as we did at our last meeting. I believe we should exercise this option and lead by example until a more appropriate time. I would I look forward to the time, soon I hope, when we can meet in person and get back to normal meetings. No one wants that more than me. I believe that time is coming soon if the curve of this virus continues to flatten. But I think that it is a decision that should be made by the elected council members in conversation with other local governments, government bodies in the region. When I was elected to office, my pledge to you was to be thoughtful, respectful of to all, sincere and transparent. My pledge to you today is the same. I cannot in good faith ask you to make sacrifices for the common good if I do not do the same. Respectfully, Andy Ross. And now...
Let me allow me just a minute here to maybe kind of clarify for the record and address the record concerning some of this that was just read into the record. As I made these decisions to hold this meeting in person, each one of you were contacted and each one of you responded in some form or fashion. We had several phone calls back and forth and subsequent phone calls with about your feelings about conducting this meeting in person. In order to clarify something here, the the Governor's Executive Order, the Governor's Executive Order does allow us to meet in virtual meetings in a virtual setting, but it doesn't require that we that we not meet in person. As long as we meet some CDC guidelines like we are doing right now, we're allowed to meet in person. There is nothing that says we have to meet virtually. I just want to make that clear for the record. There's been some research done, there's been multiple jurisdictions that are holding meetings in person. We are not the first. We know that that there are others after checking into with some other cities. You know, as as we move to establish some of regularity in our lives here, I really think that it was important for us to get together as a body. We've been asking our employees to come back and I think it shows a good a good presence of council meeting in person. And I don't think that I certainly, listen, I take very seriously the responsibility that you guys have given me to run this city. And the decisions I make are not based on haphazard decisions. I certainly take everyone's health very serious. You see what we've done? We've done it to the extent that we can possibly do. We are not breaking any guidelines. We had an opinion from our City Attorney that doesn't prohibit us from meeting like this as long as we meet certain requirements. We have met those requirements and I intend to hold everybody accountable. You see, you've got people waiting outside. We'll we'll shuffle people in as as we as we need to for agenda items. So I just wanted to make just a few things clear on that. I take I take responsibility you give me very seriously. And and I did, I mean, each one of you had responded about having this meeting in person. Thank you.
Good evening. Rule six of the Council Rules of Order and Procedure state that in the Mayor's and Vice Mayor's absence, the City Clerk shall call council to order at the appointed time and call the roll of members. If a quorum is present, the council shall elect by a majority of those present a meeting chair to act until the Mayor or Vice Mayor arrives. Councilmember Chambers.
Here.
Councilmember Frank Chalora.
Here.
Councilmember Sheri Donahue.
Here.
Councilmember Councilmember Gil Schisler.
Here.
Andy Ross is absent this evening. So now if you guys can, now that we have a quorum for tonight's meeting, the floor is now open for council chair nominations.
I'll make a motion to elect Councilmember Donahue as Chair.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Sheri, you now have the floor.
I'm sticking my nose out at you. My tongue out. Thank you. Thank you for the confidence to run this meeting. I'll do my best and I will reserve my comments about the Mayor's letter to later. Hillsborough County is currently under a local emergency due to the COVID-19 pandemic pursuant to Executive Order Number 20-29 issued by Governor Ron DeSantis on March 20th, 2020, and then extended. Municipalities may conduct meetings of their governing boards without having members physically present to comprise a quorum or any specific location and by utilizing communications, media technology such as telephone or video conferencing as provided by Section 120.545 Florida statutes. Due to COVID-19, City Hall is closed to the public, but provisions have been made to allow for public comment on any agenda items considered at tonight's meeting. All public comments made through the use of communications media technology will be afforded the same consideration as if the public comments were offered in person. Additionally, the city has not selected any virtual platform that requires the public to purchase or download any additional software or equipment to participate in this meeting. Remote access to view and/or participate in tonight's meeting is available through multiple technologies. The city has elected to provide public comment through the following options. Email. Members of the public may email a statement to be read into the record during the public comment section for any items listed on the agenda. Statements may be sent to public commenting@templeterris.com or submitted at templeterris.com backslash public comment form. All emails, excuse me, all emails must include the participant's name and city of residence and should be of a length that can be read into the record within three minutes by designated city staff. By phone. Persons wishing to provide public comment by phone for items listed on the agenda were invited to sign up to speak prior to the meeting and will be connected via conference call. Also, remote public participation at City Hall. A remote viewing station with a public comment microphone is set up in the City Hall parking lot for citizens who wish to participate in this manner. When addressing City Council, a speaker must first state his or her name and city of residence. Persons participating by phone shall not interrupt the meeting or other speakers and shall conduct themselves as if they were physically present at the meeting. Persons failing to do so are subject to being muted or disconnected. Any individual desiring to appear in person to provide comments from the city's remote access location outside of City Hall will be subject to screening for symptoms of COVID-19. The city will insist that the general public observe the CDC guidelines for social distancing. Any person exhibiting any symptoms of COVID-19 will be directed to relocate away from others and if necessary, will be referred for medical evaluation. Now please rise for the invocation led by Chief Albano and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag.
Before the invocation, if if I may, a moment of silence for all those that have been lost to COVID-19 virus and to the families that even now continue to mourn. Let us pray. Father God, we stand before you together this evening thankful for your many blessings and your presence in our lives. Lord, we are reminded in times like these just how fragile our existence truly is and how incredibly blessed we are to be able to bring our troubles, our worries and our fears and apprehensions before you with full faith and confidence that you know right where each and every one of us are. Help us, Father, to feel your presence and to seek your will and all that comes against us as we together seek to serve one another. In whatever our position in this community we call Temple Terrace, help each citizen, each elected official, each city employee seek to do his or her very best to put the needs of the many before our individual needs, to help one another within our individual ability to provide help as often as we can and to exhibit patience, compassion and understanding one to the other as we continue to move forward through these times of uncertainty. Help us to keep at the forefront of our understanding that we are traveling through the same storm created by COVID-19, but that through this time, we are most assuredly not all in the same boat. Father, we pray for our elected officials at the state, local and national levels and ask that you would help them all to work together for the benefit and greater good of all Americans. Help them to set aside petty differences and party lines so that what is truly good and right and just is accomplished according to your purpose and plan. As we formally recognize the resignation of our mayor, our neighbor and our friend Mel Harado, I pray for peace and prosperity in her life moving forward. She accomplished much during her tenure as mayor, but endured even more hardship and sorrow during the same time. An extra special blessing we pray this evening for our local leaders as together they will be called upon to make decisions this evening to retool the leadership of this council and then to work effectively together alongside our City Manager to help ensure the continued success and prosperity of our amazing city. All these things we pray tonight in the name above all names. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I just want to let you know that the reason I'm able to start this meeting like this is because each of us were provided with the Mayor's notes just in case one of us got to be the lucky Chair of the meeting. So I'm a, I thank you very much for these well-written notes and I will do my best to conduct this meeting this evening. The City of Temple Terrace is pleased to join the local Muslim community in celebrating Ramadan and the end Eid Fitr this year. We wish our Muslim neighbors a blessed Ramadan, Ramadan Mubarak. Sister Tara Saladin is here with us as we recognize the celebration. Sister Tara is a community activist, a mentor and a Temple Terrace resident for over 25 years, the long history of community service. Since Sister Tara has a bachelor's degree in gerontology from the University of South Florida, she is currently involved with several community organizations including Hope, Coalition for Civil Freedom and MDF, helping to support and strengthen the community to achieve and flourish. Sister Tara, please.
Good evening, City Manager, Madam Chair and Councilmembers. I am honored to be here today to deliver this year's Ramadan and Eid al-Fitr recognition speech. Ramadan is one of the holiest months of the Islamic calendar in which over a billion Muslims around the world partake in. This month marks the first revelation of the Holy Quran to Prophet Muhammad, peace be upon him. Ramadan usually lasts 29 to 30 days based on the timing of the Ashranamakul, new moon. Muslims around the world observe the month by fasting each day from sunrise to sunset while abstaining from food, drink and acts or thoughts considered immoral. The daily breaking of the fast called Iftar is often celebrated with family, families and gatherings in in communities and gatherings, which is followed by the Taraweeh, evening prayer. Ramadan is regarded as a special regarded as a special time for spiritual reflection, increased solidarity and charity for the global poor, sick and hungry, and bridging of differences between people over a commitment to faith. The end of Ramadan is commemorated by the Eid al-Fitr, a festival of breaking the fast, a joyous occasion marked by sharing sweets, gifts and good tidings with family, friends and neighbors. This year, the Muslim communities around the world observed fasting differently. Many, like myself, have stayed home to break their fast and perform prayer in order to practice safety. Aside from these circumstances which have affected the entire world, I am extremely proud of the Muslim communities in the Tampa Bay area. Since the onset of the COVID-19 pandemic, they have stepped up to lift the burden off of those who are in need by providing food packages and voucher support serving both Muslims and non-Muslims alike. This act of kindness is a true example of how Muslims are. Thank you for the opportunity to be here today and I pray that our communities continue to overcome this pandemic with strength and unity. Thank you.
Thank you. I do have a proclamation that I would like to read, a certificate of recognition. In recognition of the holy month of Ramadan, which began on May 6, 2020, Muslims around the world observe the month by fasting each day from sunrise to sunset to help bring awareness to the plight of the less fortunate. The daily breaking of the fast, known as Iftar, is often celebrated with community gatherings and family tidings, which is followed by evening prayer. For the followers of the Islamic faith, Ramadan, which lasts 30 days, is regarded as a time for spiritual reflection and solidarity with the less fortunate. The end of Ramadan is celebrated with the Il Iftar Festival, which commemorates the breaking of the fast. Eid iftar is a joyous occasion marked by the sharing of sweets, gifts and good familiar tidings with friends and neighbors. We recognize the month of Ramadan and the Eid iftar festival as well as our Muslim community and neighbors awarded its 19th day of May, 2020. Vice Mayor Andy Ross and the members of City Council.
Thank you.
I'd like to give it to you.
All right, let's see if we can do it.
We don't, we don't, this is kind of a little different here. We're going to have to spread out a little bit, but if we can have, this is your.
Yeah, if you sit here, Sheri, if you want to go up on the dais so that we can maintain our distance.
We're making these up as we go, right?
Thank you, we appreciate it.
A little, a little different than normal.
Not even going to say smile because it doesn't matter.
Okay, thank you very much.
All right.
Thank you, thank you.
We have no further recognitions or proclamations, no other presentations, but we do have board appointments. The Firefighters Pension Board of Trustees is established in accordance with the city code and made up of five members. Two members are city representatives, two members are Temple Terrace firefighters and one is a resident elected by the board. The present city representatives are the Mayor and City Manager whose two-year terms have expired. It is recommended that Vice Mayor Andy Ross and City Manager Charles Stevenson be appointed to a two-year term until May 2022 as the city's representatives. So I need a motion to approve the appointment of Vice Mayor Andy Ross and City Manager Charles Stevenson. I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second, is there any discussion? I call for the vote. All in favor of Mayor and City Manager for the two-year terms ending in May 22, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None. Motion passes. Also need a motion to approve the appointment of Fire Chief Ian Kemp as the firefighters' representative for a term extending until May 2022. Do I hear that motion?
So moved.
Any second? Motion and second? Call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, motion passes. The Police Officers Pension Board of Trustees is established in accordance with city code and made up of five members. Two members are city representatives, two members are Temple Terrace police officers and one is a resident elected by the board. The present city representatives are the Mayor and City Manager whose two-year terms have expired. It is recommended that Vice Mayor Andy Ross and City Manager Charles Stevenson be appointed to a two-year term until May 2022 as city representatives. I call for a motion to approve the appointment.
So moved.
I hear a motion?
Second.
And a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. At the April 14th, 2020 quarterly pension board meeting, the board voted and appointed Thomas Zarella, a citizen of Temple Terrace, to serve in the fifth trustee seat. City Council, in accordance with the state law, will need to ratify this appointment with the fifth trustee seat as just as a ministerial act. I call for a motion to ratify the appointment of Thomas Zarella to serve in the fifth trustee seat for a term extending until May 2022.
So moved.
Have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve, call for the vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you so much. So now, moving on to the next point of the agenda, Mayor appointments. I have to take a deep breath here. The Mayor is responsible for annually appointing the City Council members to serve as representatives of the city on various Hillsborough County boards and state committees. The Mayor was also serving on some of these. Due to the Mayor's resignation, some changes are necessary. The following selections have been determined and they are, the following will be for Andy Ross, Metropolitan Planning Organization, Tampa Hillsborough Economic Development Corporation, the Council of Governments, Florida League of Cities, the Florida League of Mayors. James Chambers has been asked to take the positions, the Hillsborough River Interlocal Planning Board, River Watch Task Force, and I, myself Sheri Donahue, have been asked to take Municipal Code Enforcement Board Liaison. I am calling for a motion to confirm these appointments, do I have a motion?
Move to approve.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Motion carries. Consideration of the minutes, the minutes are acceptable as presented in your packet and online. I entertain a motion to approve the minutes, do I have a motion?
So, so moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nay. Persons persons wishing to be heard on items not listed on the agenda, a three-minute time limit will be imposed on all comments from the public. During public comment on items not on the agenda, the City Manager and Directors do make note of these items. Assure residents that all of your comments are taken seriously and will be followed up on. Make sure that you have placed your name on the sign-in sheet outside to request to speak. Speakers, come to the microphone outside City Hall and state your name and city of residence as you are called. Do we have anyone wishing to speak?
Is there anyone present who would like to speak?
We can't hear, Jeannie.
Is there anyone present who would like to speak tonight? Let the record show, Madam Chair, that there is no one who wishes to speak at this location.
She has no one to speak?
Yes.
Okay, all right. None at all? Okay, thank you. So we'll move on to communications and petitions. We have an MCEB lien reduction petition at 108 Holland Avenue and MCEB Chair David Pogorlitch will present the case. Mr. Pogorlitch.
Thank you, Council and staff. Tonight, lien reduction hearing is for the culmination of three cases. It's Case 13-0426, 13-2734 and Case 17-2748. The total of those cases had an original lien of $196,600. The board's recommendation by unanimous vote is to lower that pending, you know, we have received a payment within 30 days to 2,200. I would also like to remind Council that although it's not part of our our recommendation, there is an, maybe, I don't know if they paid it or not, an outstanding demolition fee of $8,300 that certainly we would like to make sure that they both get paid.
Thank you.
And I'll stand for any questions.
Hi, want to know, is the property owner here?
I just, the chief's checking with Tom Barone now. I don't think so, I don't think any respondents are here.
Okay.
But he's checking.
Okay, all right. Do you want to move on to public comment? If there's any? Is there anyone to speak to this item? Mr. Stevenson, I'm not getting clear communication from the outside.
Madam Chair, this is Tom Barone, co-director. There's no one here to speak on behalf of 108 Holland.
As I recall, the respondent was elderly, so I was not surprised that she's not here.
Okay. All right. City Attorney, do we have any emails or letters on this item?
No, we've received no emails or letters.
Okay. Councilmembers, do you have any questions of of Mr. Pogorlitch or of staff?
No.
Do you have no questions?
I have, if I may, I have a question for for Council. At our code board meeting, it was determined that we could not link the demolition fee with the lien reduction requirements. Is that something that's in the purview of the of the Council?
I think what the city, what the city had been asking for at this meeting was that the reduction of the lien, the contingent on the paying of the $8,300 demolition lien. I think that at the time... I think that, at the time, the Code Enforcement Board did not have control over reducing or doing anything really with the demolition lien. This property is, is being offered, is going to be offered for sale once this matter is taken care of. We were hoping and expecting that the $8,300 would be taken care of at the time of the sale. I know that doesn't always happen for some reason, but that is still what I believe that the city is asking for this evening, that you make the reduction of the, the code enforcement lien contingent on them paying the $8,300 as well. I'm assuming it would all be paid at the same time. And keep in mind too, that when you look at this, it did involve three cases. The two, 2013 cases were basically caused by somebody who ultimately sold the property or it was foreclosed, and the person who is now, the elderly lady who's now really Thrasher Investment LLC, she was not responsible for that $196,000. She was responsible for part of that. So she's connected to the 2017 case and not the 2013 cases.
Counsel, any comments on this?
I just have one, one question. The demolition costs, those were actual physical, those were actual costs to the city.
The $8,300 for the demolition is an actual invoice. That's what we paid. Yes.
So the, does the $2,200 wipe that out, or is that your question?
No, no, no. The $2,200 that we're recommending would be in addition to
In addition, okay.
The $8,300 for a total of $10,500.
Okay, I'm good with that. Okay.
I have a comment. It seemed that in the minutes, the owner said that she was more than happy to pay for the demolition.
Yes, she, yes. She did show up for our code enforcement meeting with her attorney, and at that time, she was grateful for the reduction and was more than happy to pay the, the fee. And then, you know, it could just be that she's homebound because of COVID-19.
Most likely, yeah.
But I would like to make sure that, that $8,300 doesn't slip through the cracks because like I told Commissioner Cosmin Schisler, that is a real hard cost to the city. That's how much we actually had to pay somebody to do the demolition.
Okay.
And that's still out of pocket for us.
Absolutely. Well, thank you for giving us a chance to think about this before someone makes the motion, because that will, they might have an opportunity to add that into the motion. If that was okay with the city attorney, that we do it that way, say, okay. So do I, I will call now. Are there any other questions? Yes, you have a question.
At our last virtual meeting, we extended the deadline to pay some of the liens past the 30 days due to the emergency. Are they able to pay in 30 days?
At the, at the time that we had our code meeting, which was, I guess, three months ago, two months ago, there wasn't any issues with paying it properly. You know, there was an indication that, you know, if they had to, they'd go down. Our meetings were on Thursday. They were going to be down there on Friday or Monday to pay it. So I'm not aware of any hardships other than, like I said, being her, her being elderly and maybe not wanting to get out of the house.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, I would like to call.
If I can, please. You do have the authority though to give more than 30 days if you wish to do so for the payment of the lien.
Help me out. Do you remember what we gave before? What did we say before?
Well, we, we went to the exact cases. My, my recommendation is to go with the 30 days, and if there's a hardship, they can, they can ask us.
Okay.
Yeah, it's already been more than, it would have been, you know, if it had everything going as normal, you would have heard this a month ago.
That's true, yeah.
Right, true. All right, well then I'd like to ask, call for a motion to approve the lien reduction in case 13-0426, 13-2734, and 17-2748, City versus the State of Carolyn H. Decat, and City versus Thrasher Investments LLC, for the property located at 108 Holland Avenue.
Move to approve the lien reduction request from the $196,600 down to the combination of the $2,200 and the $8,300 for the demolition costs, for a total of $10,500 to be paid within 30 days. If there is a hardship, then they can come back to us, given COVID-19 issues, but in the meantime, or it reverts back to the original amount.
Thank you.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Pogorlitch.
Thank you.
We move to the consent agenda. City manager will explain the items listed on the consent agenda, and we ask, we will ask for public comments after that explanation. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam, Madam Chair. On the consent, we've got four items on consent this evening. Item 7A is a resolution approving expenditures of funds in the amount of $27,506 from the Special Law Enforcement Trust Fund from accounts 001-1411-521.64-99, 001-1421-521.62-41, and 001-1411-521.82-20. Special Law Enforcement Funds revenues arising from law enforcement activities or contraband is recovered, excuse me, and other proceeds of criminal activity are forfeited. The proceeds from these funds may all be used for law enforcement purposes meet certain statutory, statutory requirements. The request for the expenditures of this, this money is as follows. $17,506 to purchase a stalker message trailer equipped with traffic stat sensors and traffic analysis program. Payment may be, may be made from account 001-1411-521.64-99. Second purchase is $7,000 to be put towards a patrol division squadron refurbishment, refurbishment project. Payment to be made from account 001-1421-521.62-41. The third expenditure is a $3,000 donation to the Boys and Girls Club of Tampa Bay in support of the Sam and Larice Hashem Temple Terrace Boys and Girls Club. This donation will be made from account 001-1411-521.82-20. Item 7B is a resolution approving a 2019-2020 interlocal agreement for the distribution of enhanced 911 emergency telephone service fee revenues for the fiscal year 2019-2020 between the City of Temple Terrace and the county, Hillsborough County, in the amount of $122,015. Recommended distribution of these funds are $62,000 to be used for 911 dispatch salaries from account 001-1440-521.12-11. The second expenditure is for $59,915, be placed in the general fund restricted account in 001-0000-281.00. Item 7C is a resolution approving the purchase of a 2020 Ford F-1 crew cab pickup truck for our Public Works Department under Florida Sheriff's Association contract FSA 19-VEL 27.0 from Duval Ford in the amount of $24,822 to be made from account 160-715-541.64-12. Current fiscal year budget for the administrative division including, is included funding in this, in the amount of $25,000 for this purchase of this replacement vehicle. Item 7D is a resolution approving the purchase of a 2020 Ford F-150 crew cab pickup truck for the Public Works Department under Florida Sheriff's Association contract FSA 19-VEL 27.0 from Duval Ford in the amount of $24,822 for our sewer division. The payment from the account for 10-1931-535.64-12. Current fiscal year includes the funding in the amount of $25,000 for the purchase of this vehicle. That's all I have in consent this evening. Madam Chair.
Thank you. I'll ask you now for public comment on this consent agenda. I'm going to the remote location first. Monitor Jeannie Barlow, is there anyone who wishes to speak to any of the items?
Is there anyone present who wishes to speak to these items? Madam Chair, let the record show that no one wishes to speak from this location.
Thank you. I could hear you that time. Greg Pauli, is there anyone on the phone?
Madam Chair, we have no registered callers to speak on this item.
Thank you. Ms. Shown, do we have any emails or letters that have been received for you to read into the record?
We've received no letters or emails.
Okay. If the consent agenda is acceptable, I entertain a motion to approve unless anyone wants to pull a particular item.
Move to approve the consent agenda. Second.
There's a motion to approve for the second. I call for the motion to be a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Motion passes. Public hearings, ordinances, and resolutions. This is the, moving forward here, we will open the public hearing, the second public hearing, and reading to adopt ordinance 1492 for CPA 20-01, Seafried Industrial Properties, Inc. Mark Hudson, Executive Planner, Hillsborough County City Counting Planning Commission, will explain. Welcome.
Thank you, Mark Hudson, Planning Commission staff. I'm here to present to you a plan amendment TT CPA 20-01. I spoke to you about a month ago on this, and we asked for your direction to transmit this to the Department of Economic Opportunity for their review. We have done so, and we received their comments back, which they had no objections. So that was a major thing that has transpired since we've spoken. But to refresh your memory, I'll go ahead and very quickly go through a very simple PowerPoint that I presented a month ago. Again, as I mentioned, it's TT CPA 2001, and this is the location, which is the southwest corner of Harney and 301. You can see it indicated by the star on the map. This is a little bit better aerial to show you the character of the area. The plan amendment is surrounded in the lavender dash line, and you can see the development around it, which is mainly industrial, commercial, public, semi-public. There's only one single family home that actually abuts the property. Little, by way of a little bit of background, it's privately initiated. It's a regular scale, therefore we had to send it to DEO for their review, and they did have no objections. It's over 80 acres, and the request is to go from the Hillsborough County Community Mixed Use 12 to Temple Terrace Research Corporate Park, and this property was voluntarily annexed to the municipality, excuse me, on March 3rd. And I have a series of photos here just to give you a character of the area. This first one is showing the undeveloped property with some of the commercial and industrial uses surrounding it. Again, this is showing you some of the road systems. This is Temple Terrace Highway and Harney Road. This is some commercial development just north of the property. This is a church on Harney Road across, on the north side of Harney Road. This shows you the intersection of Harney Road at 301. And this is 301 looking south. The property that's part of this plan amendment is on your right. This is another church that abuts the property on US 301, and it shows you some of the industrial development to the south on Maslin Drive. And finally, this is Eminem Products adjacent to the property to the west. This is the adopted future land use map as it stands today. You see the lavender color of the community mixed use 12, both in Hillsborough County and Temple Terrace. And by your action tonight, if you approve this plan amendment, it would change to the salmon color, which represents Temple Terrace Research Corporate Park. What are the impacts? Currently, the entitlements allow almost 1,000 residential units and 1.7 million square feet of non-residential uses. By your action tonight, if it was approved, those residential entitlements would, would no longer be in place. However, the non-residential entitlements would double to 3.5 million square feet. Our staff did review this per the Temple Terrace Imagine 2040 Comprehensive Plan. We looked at several sections. As noted on, on the slide, the full policies are located in your packet, and we did find it consistent. And here are some of the other sections that reviewed. Again, we determined that this is consistent in our recommendation to you. We did have this reviewed by the Planning Commission Board on March 9. They did recommend approval by this board and found it consistent with your plan. As I already mentioned, the April 7 meeting where we got your direction to transmit to DEO, again, they had no objections, and we're here for your action tonight. And finally, our staff recommends that City Council adopt the appropriate ordinance to change this land use plan category from Hillsborough County Community Unit Mixed Use 12 to Temple Terrace Research Corporate Park. That concludes my presentation, and I stand for any questions.
Thank you. Let's see, do we have any public comment? I'll go to Jeannie Barlow, the remote location. Do you have any comment, Jeannie?
Does anybody wish to speak to this item? Madam Chair, let the record show that no one wishes to speak from this location.
Thank you, Ms. Barlow. Greg Pauli, do we have anyone on the phone?
Madam Chair, we have no registered callers on the phone to speak to this topic.
All right. And Ms. Shown, do we have any emails or letters to be read into the record?
We have received no emails or letters.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions from council to the, I understand the applicant, you have, someone is here to answer questions if there are any? Thank you. Anybody have any questions? Any comments? Okay, there are no questions or comments. I will close the public hearing and ask the city attorney to read the title of the ordinance.
An Ordinance of the City of Temple Terrace, Florida, Amending the Imagine 2040 Temple Terrace Comprehensive Plan: Future Land Use Map for Two Parcels of Land Located South of Harney Road and West of US Highway 301, Consisting of Approximately 82.30 Plus or Minus Acres, By Changing the Future Land Use Designation of Said Property From Community Mixed Use 12, Hillsborough County, To Research Corporate Park, Temple Terrace, For TT CPA 20-01, Providing Severability and Effective Date, And Repealing All Ordinances or Parts of Ordinances in Conflict Herewith.
Thank you. If the ordinance is acceptable, I entertain a motion to adopt ordinance 1492, Approving the Comprehensive Plan Amendment for CPA 20-01, Seafried Industrial Properties.
Madam Chair, I'll move to a staff recommendation.
I have a motion.
Second.
And a second. Any discussion? No discussion? I call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you so much. The second public reading and reading to adopt ordinance 1493 for RZP 20-01, Folio Number 038207-0000, and part of Folio Number 061363-0000. I open the public meeting, and I understand we have a speaker on this matter?
Yes. Good evening, council members. Senior Planner Goss Carpus. Again, now, you just heard the.
Point of order. The clerk needs to give the oath to anyone who's willing to speak.
I'm sorry, apologize. Thank you.
Okay, so this is the, the same piece of property. Now we're looking at doing the rezoning. This is the second reading for ordinance 1493. I don't see.
Do you want him to speak, or do you want to wait until he's finished speaking?
Okay.
I can't hear. But are you asking?
I'm sorry, we, we have one other point of order, and that would be to make inquiry on ex parte communication. Ms. Shown, would you?
At this time, I would ask the council members to please state whether you have had any ex parte communications concerning this particular issue, either verbal or written. If you have received any, please state for the record whether you have had either a written or verbal communication. If it's been written, please provide that written communication to the clerk. And if you have received any verbal communication, please state with whom you have received. And if you have received any verbal communication, please state with whom you have received, with whom you have discussed this or heard from, what the substance of the communication was, and when that took place.
Thank you. I have had none.
I have had none.
I've had none.
And now, can we just form, let's formally announce who you are.
I am Gus Carpus, Senior Planner, Community-
Thank you, Mr. Carpus.
So again, this is the second hearing, an adoption for ordinance 1493. And it's for the property that you just looked at with the comp plan amendment. Currently, since it is now annexed in the city, it has county zoning. We have to bring it into some city zoning. It's currently unaddressed, we're working on that right now. The current zoning is Community Mixed 12, and we're looking at making a PD. Again, the acreage is 82.3. Here's a site plan. The site plan will be brought before the council, we're shooting for June 2nd. This is just kind of a preliminary view of what they'd like to do. Here are some renderings that they submitted. The planning commission found this consistent. The DRC has no objections. Development Department recommends approval. And April 7th, the council did approve the first reading. Short and sweet.
Thank you.
The applicant, the applicant is here.
If the applicant is here, would he or she like to speak?
Good evening. Kami Corbett with the Law Firm of Hillward Henderson, 101 East Kennedy Boulevard, Suite 3700. I just wanted to speak to you and just thank you very much for the continued support by your staff and by all of you in helping us get through these approvals during this very difficult time. And you've been very creative, and your efforts are much appreciated. And if we, if you have any questions, we're happy to answer them. Thank you.
Thank you. I ask for a public comment from the remote location monitor, Ms. Barlow. Any comment?
Anybody present wish to speak? Madam Chair, let the record show that no one wishes to speak from this location.
Thank you. Mr. Pauli, is anyone on the phone?
Madam Chair, we have no registered callers to speak on this item.
Thank you. And Ms. Shoshon, are there any emails or letters to read into the record?
No emails or letters.
Okay. All right. Are there any questions from council? Any comments from council? Okay. We will close the public hearing, and I would ask the city attorney to read the title of the ordinance.
An ordinance of the City of Temple Terrace, Florida, rezoning 82.3 plus minus acres of land located south of Harney Road and west of US Highway 301 from zoning classification agricultural rural AR Hillsborough County to planned development PD Temple Terrace for RZP 20-01, providing for amendment of the official zoning map of the city, providing severability and effective date, and repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict herewith.
If the ordinance is acceptable, entertain a motion to adopt ordinance approving the zoning reclassification of RZP 20-01 dash folio number 038207-0000 and part of folio number 061363-0002. Do I have a motion?
Madam Chair, move to adopt ordinance 1493 regarding RZP 20-01.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Any comments? I call for a vote on the motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Thank you, the motion passes. A resolution to approve the comprehensive annual financial report for fiscal year 2019. I believe we have Jeff Wolf, the CPA for Moore Stevens, Loveless, and Finance Director Lynn Boswell, who will explain. Welcome to the chambers.
Good evening. First of all, I just want to thank council for allowing us to serve you as your external auditors. And with that, I'll get right into our reports and deliverables. First is our independent auditors' report, which is our report on the fairness of the financial statements in accordance with applicable standards. We issued an unmodified opinion, which is the highest level of assurance we can give. You know, it's a clean opinion, so that's the best you can get. Our next report is a report on internal control over financial reporting and compliance. On this report, we had no findings or deficiency noted, which is a very good thing. And I just kind of wanted to take you back to last year where there was a material weakness and a significant deficiency. So both of those items were cleared, and no findings were noted. So definitely something to be proud of, and some significant improvement. The next report is our management letter, which is required by the auditor general. Again, no findings noted in that report. And lastly, is our independent accountant report, which is a report on the Florida statutes compliance with investments. And there's no findings noted in that report. So really, in summary on the report, it was a clean audit. Some quick financial highlights. This is really as a citywide analysis, if the city was a business. On the governmental activities, you'll note, I think, that the key, you're unrestricted net position as total expenses, which is still negative due to your pension liabilities. But compared to last year, it was 184 percent. So there's pretty significant improvement, you know, along with that $12 million change in net position, which was due to some land sales and then paying down debt. Your business type activities is a very strong 40% unrestricted net position compared to total expenses, which is down from 55% last year, but still a pretty strong number. Onto your general fund. I think the key information to highlight here is your unassigned and assigned and unassigned fund balances, total expenditures, which, if you look, it did go down to 18.4 percent compared to last year. But you do have some significant debt service expenditures in 19 that were not recurring. So really, if you back those numbers out, you're more to a 23 percent, which is a pretty strong, healthy fund balance. Onto some, just some quick comparison to the budget. You'll notice that you are about $1 million under your projected budget revenues, which mostly was due to some intergovernmental revenues coming in a little bit short. And then you are also a million dollar, I mean, .1 million dollars under expenditures, which resulted in a point million dollar decrease from the projected fund balance change in the budget. Lastly, your enterprise funds. Just kind of do some comparisons on your operating income. Your water and sewer fund had a .9 million dollar operating income compared to 1.8 last year. Not too big of a significant change. And then your sanitation fund broke even. With last year, it was a .2 million dollar net income. So with that, in summary, I really want to say this was kind of the year that we were hoping for, was a very clean audit. And, you know, just continue going forward, and I'll answer any questions you might have on the audit.
Thank you. But first, we'll go for public comment. Ms. Barlow, are there, is there anyone who would like to make comment from the remote location?
Madam Chair, there is no one present who would like to make comment at this time.
Thank you. Greg Pauli, is there anyone on the phone?
Madam Chair, there are no callers on the phone to make comment on this item.
All right. Ms. Shoshon, city attorney, are there any emails or letters to be read for the record?
We've received no emails or letters.
Okay. Counsel, do you have any questions of our speaker or of Ms. Boswell? No comments? Okay. Acceptable. Entertain a motion approving the comprehensive annual financial report of fiscal year 2019.
So move.
I have a motion, I have a second. All in favor? Any discussion? Sorry.
I have a comment. Being a liaison to the audit committee, and having been involved with the CAFRA now for probably the last three years, two years of my tenure on council, I have to say that by far, this is the best presentation that I've seen. The fact that it was a clean audit should let every one of us sleep a little bit easier at night, knowing that we know what's going on with the books. There were a lot of issues that were fixed, and, but these issues were inherited. They weren't caused by this current group. So just, I just wanted to make the comment that they've come a long way. They've done a lot of hard work, and they pretty much did it all themselves. There wasn't a whole lot of outside intervention that was required. So just congratulations on a great audit and a good year.
Any other comment? No? In that case, I call for a vote on the motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you so much. And we're happy that it was a clean, smooth audit for you, made your life feel better. We have a resolution approving the adjustments to the fiscal year 2020 budget. Finance Director Lynn Boswell will explain.
There are projects that were started in fiscal year 2019 that were intended to be finished before the end of that fiscal year. That did not happen. In addition, some last-minute issues had come up. And for these, there were purchases of projects that were not completed. They were intended to be spent out of fiscal year 19 and should now be attributed to the fiscal year 20 budget. Additional grants and payments have been received that are significant enough that it changes the fund appropriation. The attached listings demonstrate what was intended for fiscal year 19 and was not received or finished by September 30th, 2019, and funds received or dispersed that were not originally budgeted. And you have that detail? May I stand for any questions?
Thank you. Well, first, we'll go for public comment. Ms. Barlow, are there, is there anyone from the remote location who would like to speak?
Madam Chair, let the record show that there is no one present from this location who wishes to speak.
Thank you. Mr. Pauli, anyone on the phone?
Madam Chair, there are no callers on the phone that wish to speak on this item.
Thank you. And Ms. Shoshon, do we have any emails or letters to be read into the record?
No emails or letters have been received.
All right. Counsel, do you have any questions? Observations? Comments? No? I see a lot of nodding heads, all right. If acceptable, I would entertain a motion approving the comprehensive, sorry, too far, reading the wrong one. I will accept a motion to approve the adjustments to the fiscal year 2019-20 budget, appropriating and allocating funds for projects that were not completed in fiscal year 2018-19 and for unplanned revenue and expenses in fiscal year 2019-20. Do I have a motion?
Move to approve.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nay. Thank you. Motion passes. Resolution recognizing and approving the vice mayor to serve as the acting mayor until the next regularly scheduled election. I will turn this over to our city attorney Pam Shoshon, who will explain and read the mayor's resignation letter.
Thank you. Pursuant to the city council's rules of order and procedure, the vice mayor shall take the chair in the mayor's absence. According to Section 3.05 of the city charter, the office of mayor shall become vacant upon the mayor's resignation. The resignation, resignation of the mayor. Pursuant to the charter Section 3.03, the vice mayor shall act as mayor and assume the duties of such during the mayor's absence until a new mayor is elected at the next regular election. This resolution is to formally implement these sections of our procedural rules and of the city's charter. The reason that we are doing this is that a letter of resignation was received from our mayor Mel Giorado, and the memo stated, "After strong consideration, I have decided to resign as mayor of the City of Temple Terrace, effective date May 7, 2020. After focusing on the future path I want my life to take and reviewing my responsibilities as mayor, I have decided that continuing to serve as mayor is not conducive to the direction I've decided to go. After discussions with city staff, it has been decided that I will have a diminished role in representing the city as mayor through this transition. Due to prior guidance and collaborative efforts, I feel that my leaving will in no way impact the direction of the city. I thank all of those who have made the city's work environment as productive as it has become. I treasure the time I have spent working with staff and council and the goals we did set and accomplish. To those citizens and friends that elected and supported me to serve as mayor of the city, I cannot thank you enough for providing this opportunity. Together, much has been accomplished, and I'm very proud to have been a part of it. Regards, Mel Giorado." Given the fact that our charter does call for the vice mayor to step in and stand in the shoes of the mayor if the mayor is unavailable, this is a formality that we are asking council now to accept and approve the vice mayor, and Andrew Ross, to serve as the acting mayor in this interim before the next general election. Because it is less than 120 days between the effective date of resignation of Mayor Giorado, no special election is required, and the vice mayor may serve until the next election in November.
Thank you. Hearing all that, I will go to the remote location monitor, Ms. Barlow. Do you have any public comment on this issue?
Madam Chair, let the record show that there is no one present to speak to this item from this location.
Thank you. Mr. Pauli, is there anyone on the conference phone to speak on this item?
Madam Chair, there are no callers on the call to speak on this item.
And Ms. Shoshon, do you have any emails or letters to read into the record?
I've received no emails or letters.
Okay. Counsel, do I have, are there any questions or comments? Okay. If acceptable, I will entertain a motion recognizing and approving Vice Mayor Andy Ross to serve as the acting mayor until the next regularly scheduled election. Do I have a motion?
Move to recognize and approve Vice Mayor Andy Ross to serve as acting mayor until the next scheduled election. Second.
So I have a motion and a second. Any comments? Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, the motion passes. And now to fill the seat of Vice Mayor Andy Ross. He is now serving as our acting mayor, and council needs to select a new acting vice mayor to serve until December 2020. Pursuant to the council rules of order and procedure, the vice mayor position is filled on a progressive rotation by seniority. Council members who have served a minimum of two years are eligible to serve as vice mayor. Council members Frank Chalera and Sherri Donahue are eligible. In the absence of the mayor, the vice mayor should take the chair at the appointed meeting hour and immediately call the members to order per Resolution 96-88. Call for nominations for the acting vice mayor. Are there any nominations? Is there a second?
Second.
Any other nominations? You didn't ask her if she'd take it. I'm just following my, my rules here. Well, there's only one nominee, and therefore, is there any discussion? I call for the vote. Vote to approve nomination of Sherri Donahue as acting vice mayor. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All approve. Any opposed? Okay. All right. The motion passes. Counsel business. Does anyone have any business, old business they need to address for counsel at this time? Okay. Seeing none? New business? Anyone? Go ahead, Mr. Chambers.
I do. You know, the Arts Council just completed a very successful program honoring our community heroes by putting yard signs around the city. And we have a new project that's starting. It's the Paper Quilt Community Project. And what that is, we want to- that's starting. It's the Paper Quilt Community Project. And what that is, we want to construct quilt-like boards, four-by-eight boards, from the people in the community to draw, write on pieces of paper what they like about Temple Terrace. And the paper will be provided by the Arts Council. It'll be four-by-four inch sheets. It'll be available at City Hall, the Family Rec Center, and the library. People can pick them up, write, draw, take pictures, whatever on the four-by-four sheet, what you like about Temple Terrace. Turn it back in, drop it back off at the three locations, and we will construct community quilts out of these. Hopefully, we'll get many different boards. We'll put them up on display around the city. They'll be in the Fourth of July parade. So we want to have a nice project. So it'll look like a quilt, but be done with paper. So you can pick those up. Starting the next couple of days, the boxes will be available at those locations.
Thank you. Ms. Shosler, you have a comment?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to comment a little bit on the activities of the city during this pandemic. I want to applaud the city staff at all levels. Everything that they've done has been exemplary, has been just phenomenal in the execution of their duties. It's been very, very confusing at times, just nobody really knows what's going to happen or what to expect next. But at every term, the city staff was there. And maybe communications could have been a little bit better in a couple instances, but this is all new to everybody on how to live through something like this. So my hat's off to them, to every level of the staff and what they had to do within the city. I'd also like to address the circumstances of tonight's meeting. I disagree with the premise that we weren't consulted. I know I was. I know I had an email on it. And I was, I think it's important that we, as city leaders, set an example. Now, that could be turned either way. Do we stay home or do we come out? We're expecting our employees and our staff to come out each and every day to their jobs. We have to set a good example. We have to be, we have to show a willingness to do what we need to do to keep our city as good as it is and take it to the next level. So I was willing to come out to tonight's meeting, and I'm willing to be at every meeting that we have going forward. I thought we could have been at some earlier ones, but that's okay. We're practicing good CDC guidelines. Everybody here is safe and healthy, walking in the door. And I believe that we're setting a good example for our residents and our staff, that we're willing to do what it takes to get the city back up to where it needs to be. And I have another question, but it's for something else. Is this the appropriate time for a budget question?
This is new business.
Okay. I just was curious, what is the basic, what are some of the basic assumptions that we're using for the budget period? We should be deep into the throes of it by now. And I really haven't seen much. And I know that with the pandemic, everything's up in the air. But I just was curious as to what are going to be our basic assumptions that we can expect to see in the short term? And you don't need to answer that now.
I do have an answer, because again, I just made myself a note to contact Mr. Ross tomorrow to start planning at least a discussion on where we're at. We have met with department directors already and put their requests for 2021. I'm just about through salaries. I am just about through capital. So by the time we get into June 1st and we get our estimates coming out of the property appraiser, we should have a pretty good indication of where we're at. Obviously, I think most of you know that revenue is going to be hit a little bit this year. We don't know what that is quite yet, because sales tax is kind of delayed. Numbers are delayed coming into us. But we would be prepared here very shortly to kind of provide you at least a guess on what we're going to look at as far as shortfalls. Understanding that the way that we had continued operating as the city, nobody lost a dime out of their paycheck. That was all budgeted money. We had been running on that money so that although people were only, employees were only working 20 hours, 24 hours a week, we were able to sustain ourselves. And I think we're going to be in fairly good shape. There's obviously some money that we can get reimbursed for. And Boswell is working on that. We just had a meeting this morning about putting together spreadsheets that have COVID numbers on it. So as we put that together, we'll start sharing some of that with you. To answer your question directly, hopefully, very shortly, we can gather as a group and start talking about, we really didn't have the opportunity to go into goals and objectives this year because of the pandemic situation. But certainly, our goals are, obviously, going to be a little bit different moving forward. And I'll be getting together with counsel to get some direction from counsel on what do you want us to do? Because, I mean, it is going to be different. We have obviously run into a rainy day. But again, I think you heard tonight that our fund balance is in pretty good shape. Over the past couple of years, we've been able to keep that pretty decent.
Okay. Thank you. I'm done.
All right. Do you have a comment? No? Okay. I do have a comment, and it does, I want to say yes, thank you so much. I think keeping our employees working and paying them is credible. It's wonderful. And I can't imagine how awful it would have been for us to have sent them home without pay. So I'm so happy that we found ourselves in that position and that you managed to find a way for them to stay busy. And they did. I mean, if anybody's been in the rec center, they see it's all spick and span, all painted and beautiful things. But I will, I would like to speak directly about what we heard today in the letter from the now acting mayor. He has been representing us in these county committees, and he's been doing so, and I understand, communicating with you. And therefore, when I was a brand-new council person, someone gave me some really good advice. And this came from someone who had been a city manager. And he said, "I'm not going to bring something to you that I don't think I have the votes." He says, "You know, I'm going to talk to each of my council members," which you can do, Mr. Stevenson, "and I'm going to get a lay of the land, and I'll bring it to you." And I said, "Well, do you think all senior managers do that?" And he said, "I'm sure they do." Okay. So anytime you say to me, "This is what we're going to do," and we have an acting mayor who is attending countywide meetings and voting to not meet in person across the state recommending to do something, when I hear from you that this is the way it's going to be, I unfortunately jump to the conclusion that this was with the blessing of our member of the EPG and that he was in full compliance. I was very unhappy to learn that he was unhappy. So I said, "Sure, I'll come," because I was sure that he gave it his blessing. So I realize that this has been a fruitful meeting, and it was a necessary meeting, and that it is very difficult to do completely virtual meetings. But I want to make sure that when you come to me as our city manager, that you've talked to counsel, because only you can do that. And, you know, occasionally, we get thrown, you know, people say, "Why don't you people get along?" The first and only time we get to ask each other a question is right here on the dais. We don't have the opportunity to kind of sit down and work it all out, unfortunately. And maybe that's a good thing. Sometimes it makes for an entertaining, if not dramatic, meeting, which we really, none of us want to happen. So I hope you're listening to my comment as well as Mr. Shosler and Acting Mayor Ross, because I did not understand that he was so adamantly opposed to this. So thank you. And at this point, let's see here, city manager's report. Do you have anything for us tonight?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just real quick, and again, I don't want to drag the meeting on, but I thank you guys for the compliments that you've given staff. They have done a tremendous, unbelievable job keeping the city together. I'm proud of them. My thanks to them. They have tried to make my job easier by keeping things going. So with that, I'll close. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And Ms. Shoshon, do you have a report for us?
I have no report tonight.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you for the detailed notes for this chair of the meeting for this evening. I appreciate it. And I can't wait to see what that quilt looks like, because there are a lot of nice things about it. With this, I call the meeting adjourned. Thank you.